All right, welcome everyone to the Board of Supervisors' public hearing for open space acquisition. We're looking at 930 Valley Forge Road, UPI 27-6-47. Bill Brennan will be leading this from here, so I'm going to pass it right over.
All right, thanks Mark. Welcome everyone. I'm Bill Brennan, Township Solicitor. And with us tonight, we're overloaded with lawyers. We have Mike Crady sitting in the front, Associate Counsel on Reeves Matters. Bob Wilson is at the end of the table. He's a lawyer specialist in open space acquisitions. And staff and counsel have been working diligently to try to put this matter together quickly. My job is to identify certain exhibits by way of housekeeping.
I can't hear you. Are you sure you're not muted?
No, I'm on. I'm on.
No, that means that he's on. No, I don't think your phone's supposed to be on.
Let me try it again, closer. Can I turn the volume up in some way?
Does it sound big? I don't think you can hear anything.
I don't think you can hear anything, yeah.
All right, well, we're back on track. The nine exhibits that will go into this hearing will be identified. This hearing is required by Section 5006 of the open space law to give the public an opportunity to hear about the project and ask questions so that there's a better understanding of what is being proposed. The board has been working on this for quite some time. There have been discussions about the possible acquisition of this property over many years, so it's not new or surprising. We're just pleased that we're able to accomplish this at this time. So the exhibits that will go into the record are the following. T1 is for Township Number One. The Schuylkill Township Resolution Number 2024-16, designating the interest in the subject real property, which has been identified as 65 acres, plus or minus, on 930 Valley Forge Road, and also Chester County UPI Number 276-47. Exhibit T2 is a text of a notice of public hearing to acquire and preserve land for open space. T3 is an affidavit of publication of the notice of public hearing in the Mercury Newspaper and online on September 13th and September 24th. I'm sorry, September 18th, 2024. T4 is a written notice to the property owner through their counsel as required by the open space law. T5 is a copy of the Mercury publication. There was an article in the local paper stating Schuylkill Township moving toward 17 million open space purchase. T6 is a copy of the screenshot of Schuylkill Township's website posted September 16th of 2024, and on continually since then, stating that the Board of Supervisors announces its intent to purchase open space. T7 is deed to the subject property. T8 is the plan that's on the easel to my right, which is a depiction, obviously, of the property that's under consideration for purchase. North is toward the left side of the picture, so it just is fit that way, and that's the way it's always been identified.
Right.
So, T9 is the compilation of written public comment. And Lori, I understand that there are about 60 email comments you received, is that right?
About 63, yes.
All right, and I understand that they're all favorable, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so these comments are identified as T9, and they will be put into the public record. So with that, in accordance with the law, there needs to be testimony identifying and supporting the proposed acquisition. So Attorney Crady now will call a couple of witnesses to sort of set the stage.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. I have two witnesses I'll call.
I'm sorry, thank you. I have two witnesses I'll call tonight. The first will be Paul Biedeman, the Township Engineer.
Hi, do.
Paul, what's your full name and title?
Certainly. My name is Paul Francis Biedinger, and I am the appointed Township Engineer for Schuylkill Township.
Can you generally walk us through your background and experience as a Township Engineer?
Absolutely. I received my degree at Penn State University in 1996, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, and a minor in Environmental Engineering. In 2004, I became a recognized professional engineer in Pennsylvania, and subsequently have been recognized as a professional engineer in several other states.
And are you familiar with what I'll call the Reeves parcel and the various iterations of development that have come through with it?
Yes, I am. The Reeves tract, as we have noted previously, is about a 65-acre parcel. It's situated within the flood hazard overlay zoning district, as well as in the historic site overlay district. With the size of a parcel of land that big, you would expect that there are areas of wetlands, areas of woodlands, areas of steep slopes. It should be noted that it's also located within the Schuylkill River, French Creek, and Montany Creek water management plan areas. And as you can see on the plan there, which is Exhibit T8, the parcel itself is surrounded on both the south and the east side of Pickering Reservoir, which, as we understand, that is the reservoir that serves the public drinking water from Aqua for the township.
And Paul, are you familiar with the two different plans that were presented before the township for development of that site?
Yes. The T and M Associates, we did high-scale reviews of the one plan, the 94 lot plan, which was PRD2. We never did it, the applicant never resubmitted to the township, so I didn't do a detailed review, but I do understand that it was a planned residential development of PRD, which is a community which clusters the dwelling units and provides additional open space to the community. The other application, which I am very familiar with, is the 51-unit plan, based on the buy right zoning, which is the R1, low-density zoning for the township. I've gone through multiple iterations of that, and the difference between that is that it is a more spread and wide-out community with every piece of land having to be parceled.
Now, a moment ago, you mentioned the different natural features of the site, including the water resources, the reserve around it, and the steep slopes, and the woodlands, and the farmed area, and the historic sites. Would all those be disturbed or substantially disturbed by either the 94 lot or the 51 lot plan?
Yes, there would be, when you're dealing with a number of dwelling units, there would be significant disturbances for both the roadways, the lots themselves, common areas, et cetera. So all those different natural features we discussed would certainly be disturbed at one level or another.
And that's even with the applicant complying with all of the Township ordinance requirements, am I right? There would still be quite a substantial loss of open space and impact on the natural resources of the site?
Absolutely.
And is part of your review, are you aware, or were you aware, of the bald eagle nesting site that was located on the property as well?
Yes, I was.
And can you generally speak, we don't need to get into too nitty-gritty detail, but what are the regulations that are in place at the state or the federal level in terms of a bald eagle nesting site?
Yes. Going up to the highest level, they're protected species from the Department of the Interior, which defers the regulations to the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. Beyond that, there is a forum, it's in our local area, it's called the Northeast Bald Eagle Screening Forum. And when you have an active bald eagle's nest, there's certain criteria that need to be met, a no disturbance, excuse me, a no disturbance buffer, a no structure buffer, as well as an avoidance measure buffer. These typically go through the breeding season of bald eagles, which are designated as January 1st to July 31st, although there can be some flexibility depending if they are still presently nesting.
And do you agree and understand that if the developments don't go forward, and the plan is preserved as is proposed under this acquisition, that there will not be those potential negative impacts to the bald eagle nesting site?
Correct, there would be none.
And are you agree, in your opinion, does the preservation of this property promote sound, cohesive, and efficient development by preserving open spaces in the community?
Absolutely, it does.
And I believe I've provided you, we've gone through, we've talked through, all the different open space interests that are allowed under the Act, including conserving water resources, conserving forest and land habitable for farming, conserving natural and scenic resources, protecting areas for wildlife, protecting the public visual enjoyment from public rights of way, and preserving sites of historic, geologic, or botanic interest. Does the preservation of this property promote and support each of those elements?
Yes, it promotes each and every one of them.
Okay, that's all I have for Mr. Biedeman.
There's the opportunity for questions, but I think we'll get the testimony in, and then the public will have a chance. We'll have the opportunity for questions after we've heard from our next Township Witness. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. The next witness will be Paul Peterson. He's a member of the Township's Open Space Commission.
Yes.
Paul, can you just identify yourself for the record officially?
Paul James Peterson.
And are you a member of the Township's Open Space Commission?
Yes.
And as being a member, have you consulted with the other members about the acquisition of this site?
Not specifically, because the Commission's charter is precluded from dealing with parcels that are under agreement, so it's not kind of specifically within our purview at the moment. However, I have looked at many parcels that are under, and so I'm familiar with both the site and the nature of what the site represents.
Now, do you disagree, or do you agree with the statements that were made by the Township Engineer as to the beneficial aspects of promoting the preservation of this property?
Yes.
And am I correct, at least in my understanding, that the Reeves parcel is one of the ones that was the genesis for the open space tax being implemented in the township all those years ago?
That's correct.
And as a member of the Open Space Commission, do you support and believe that the other members of the Commission agree with you in terms of the beneficial aspects of acquiring the property for preservation?
Absolutely.
And that's all I have for Paul.
All right, Mike, thank you. At this point, we're... Thank you. At this point, we have two possibilities for the public. There is questioning of our witnesses and of the board in general as to what the proposal means, or their statements. And under the local agency law, if you're going to make a statement, you've got to be sworn. So we'll go through that if you wish to make your statements. If you have questions, though, if you just identify yourself and just ask a question, then you don't need to go through the formal swearing process. But you can't start with a question and then, you know, ease into a statement if you're not sworn, okay? So do we have this, Mike, can we put this, leave it there, I guess? Oh, yes, spell your names and state your address when you come up to say whatever you want to say.
Yeah, can you, y'all hear me? Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I live, Donald Archer, D-O-N-A-L-D-A-R-C-H-E-R. Anything else? Resident of 928 Valley Forge Road. I live back there. So I'm going to ask the question, the kind of elephant in the room, what the heck happened? I mean, didn't Pollock, I mean, I'm so happy that this is turning into a park. I lived there for seven years. It brought me to tears to think that it was going to turn into that, like Goonies scenario in the movie, where all the evil developers swoop in and, you know, build it out, and our beautiful foxes and animals, and all the things back there, box turtles. So I'm really happy, but nobody will tell me what happened, like, just like six months, no, six weeks ago, eight weeks ago. Green, thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up, approval of Pollock buying the property, and then 180.
So I can speak to that if the board appreciates. We found a pirate ship full of treasure.
Yes!
No, no, the, so both the different plan sets that the applicant had presented, the 94 lot PRD, as well as the 51 or 52, whatever the number was, more recent plan, both have been appealed in some aspect. There was an appeal by neighbors of the 51 lot plan, and there's a pending appeal up in the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court of the 94 lot plan. And with those, there was an approach between the township and the developer as to whether they're really truly interested in preserving the property as the township has, and I think all the residents desired, and through the discussions with them, we were able to reach what I think are favorable terms to do so. So that's it.
I can follow up with just three comments. There are three collateral benefits to this, in addition to acquiring the property itself. It ends the lawsuits that have been continuing. It protects the Aqua reservoir from fertilizer and other difficulties that might be problematic for drinking water, and there is no tax increase involved in this whole process.
Well, I'm already sold. Yeah, I'm sold on this. I love it. My other question is, the real reason why me and my wife came, and probably my neighbors, how much longer do we have? We're living back there, so we have no idea, and we just have no idea. It would be nice to have an idea of, like, you guys are going to go to sale, it's going to close, and then we're going to be asked to leave, just if you guys know, and, you know, we're not going to hold you to it, but it'd be nice to have that, because there's a lot of uncertainty right now for us.
Well, there's a due diligence period, and then the closing is set to be by the end of the year. There are some complications and details relating to that. Once the agreement of sale is signed, there will be notices to the tenants based upon the amount of time in your lease to vacate.
Okay. Yeah, in the year plus the time we have probably left on the lease. Okay, that answered my question. Thank you very much.
Hello, Rich McGuckin, M-C-G-U-C-K-I-N, 1351 Patrick Henry Drive. Very happy this is happening. This is terrific. I did file a FIFO, Freedom of Information Act, to try to find out how to determine what the price that you paid for the property, and I hadn't received it yet. So I was wondering if you could kind of elaborate on how you determine what the price is, because I have a pretty extensive background in real estate, and based on the numbers that I saw, it looks like you're paying for a very, not only an approved site, but an improved site. So I was wondering how you just determined what the amount is. What I'm hopeful is that maybe you come back and lower the price a little bit. Still happy with the decision, but the number seems somewhat high. The other comment I had is that you mentioned how Aqua Americas is happy with us purchasing. What about getting them involved with the purchase too, so that the township doesn't have to bore 100% of the cost, given the fact that they're going to be able to go and ameliorate any kind of chemicals or anything going into their water stream that we all drink?
We tried that, didn't work with Aqua.
Okay.
And there's an appraisal that comes out at the exact number that is the purchase price.
Yeah, I understand. Could I get a look at that appraisal?
It's not public until after the contract is signed, so it'll be available shortly.
Okay. So is the number 12 million, or is it the 16 million?
It's 16,920.
Okay, that's about over 250,000 an acre.
Whatever it is, it is. It's all in the appraisal.
Okay. And you've determined that that's a fair price, or have you negotiated with the existing? Because it sounds like Todd Pollock kind of has the upper hand right now, because he went to Chester County, fought it. I'm glad to hear there's still additional litigation in the state of Pennsylvania to kind of fight it, but I don't necessarily think, in my opinion, I think that's high. That's all.
Chester County has a list of approved appraisers, and we deal with them regularly for any open space appraisals. We got an appraisal from an open space appraiser from the county, and that's the numbers that came back.
And the developer's numbers were much higher?
It's usually based on the best and highest use of the property, the best and highest legal use of the property, and in this case, probably considered 94 units on the lot. That's quite a few units.
So does that take into consideration the profit that the developer would have earned on the price? Is that why it's so much higher?
I would defer to one of our attorneys on that. I'm not as familiar with the...
Profit's not a factor, but the fact that it's a 96...
Well, that's how an appraisal is determined, is based on what the value is.
Well, there are different ways to look at it, and I'm not an appraisal expert. The law requires an appraisal, and we have one, and it'll be available...
So you have someone that reviewed the appraisal, and they believe that's the appropriate price?
We all reviewed it, yeah.
Okay.
In terms of agreeing it's the appropriate price, I mean, we don't set the price. That's the price. That's, you know...
That's not a true statement.
Okay, well, all right.
But neither here nor there, I'm just asking you to take a look at it. The number's high. That's all I'm saying.
I am Tom Gresko, G-R-E-S-K-O, 9 South Forge Manor Drive. Several questions. One is, what chances did the developer have in developing this property considering all these environmental conditions that are posed on it, including the eagle issue that I just Secondly, how much of the budget of our open space committee has been committed to this price? I know we pay a quarter percent wage tax, and I don't know what other taxes come out of our township, real estate tax, going towards the open space committee, but I just wondered how much they are contributing to this. And finally, I think I heard Bill say that our taxes will not be impacted by this.
They will not be increased.
Okay. Thank you.
I can answer all of your questions, actually. I think your first question was, what were the chances that the development was going to be built? They had an approved plan, so in June, the 51 lot was given preliminary conditional approval. The 94 lot, the PRD, was also an approved plan because the township was not successful in its appeal. We were overturned in the Commonwealth Court, so that was also an approved plan. We appealed it, that's the other litigation that was pending.
We were overturned in the Court of Common Pleas.
Common Pleas, thank you.
And we appealed that decision at the Commonwealth Court, and that was pending, but we lost the Court of, the Common Pleas Court case.
Great. So they had a very good chance. The homes were going to be built, yeah. Second question, with regards to the open space fund, there's about 13 million in the fund right now, the township, and this will be discussed at the public meeting immediately following this hearing. The township is looking to finance about 10 million, so we'll take the balance of the purchase price from the open space fund. And Bill already answered your question about the tax. No, there's not going to be any tax increase related to this purchase.
My name is Michael Allard. Last name is A-L-L-A-R-D, resident at 930 Valley Forge Road. So my question is, just sort of out of curiosity, what happens to the houses once the township buys the property?
We're not sure yet. We were given a sort of a tight window to get this done. The developer indicated that they had received higher offers than the one that we were making, and it was pretty much, get this done quickly, or we're going to go ahead and build the project. So the details of what's going to happen will be dealt with, certainly in an intelligent way as we move forward, but there simply wasn't time...
Right.
...to get all this lined up and still get this done. So we've been working really hard. These two binders here?
Yeah.
These started on the beginning of August. This is the paper for two months, so there's a lot going on.
Yeah, absolutely. And just sort of a follow-up question to that was, is there an outlook as far as, you know, financing the future repairs or future costs on the property? How is that sort of factored into the price, or just taxes? How does that play into it?
Certain maintenance costs are permitted to be taken from the open space fund.
Okay.
If they're not appropriate there, they'll come from general funds.
Excellent, thank you.
John Gregory, G-R-E-G-O-R-Y, 121 South White Horse Road. Bill, would it not be true that the, that the, I'm a member of the Historic Commission too, by way of full disclosure, that the decision that was made relative to the approved plans regarding the houses and the historic, identified historic properties and assets would carry through, and now it's the township's burden to abide by those restrictions?
We never like to say we're taking on a burden, John, so I don't know, but, you know, we understand that the building is historic, and wherever that takes us, it takes us. There are no plans to demolish it right now, if that's your question.
Well, so for example, with the Royal Bank Building, the Historic Commission was told that the decision that was made relative to the carriage house was going to be binding upon the next purchaser, or binding upon the township relative to the next purchaser. So I'm saying, now the township's the owner, township should abide by the restrictions that were put in place with the previous owner.
Yeah, without looking into it, John, and taking an hour or two to research it here, I can't answer that question. We'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss it as we move forward.
Yeah, and we welcome the full environment of the Historic Commission, and kudos.
I actually have a statement, not a question.
Just wear them in, please.
I do. Stephen Kuns, K-U-N-Z, and I'm a member of the Township EAC, Environmental Advisory Council, and the EAC has long considered this 65-acre Reeves tract to be the most environmentally sensitive property in Schuylkill Township that hasn't yet been developed. And because of that, primarily, at our regular meeting two nights ago, the EAC voted unanimously to have me here to make this statement on its behalf, to say that the EAC fully and strongly approves of the board's efforts to use open space funds to acquire and protect and preserve the Reeves property. Thanks.
All right, is anyone else?
Short people. Michelle Giffroy Rossi, G-I-F-F-R-O-Y hyphen R-O-S-S-I, 1353 Nathan Hale Drive. One nit question, and I don't know if it's the way the outline is drawn, but who owns the coastal property? Or is it just drawn that way? If you see the dotted line...
On the edge there?
Yeah, there's stuff that's not...
Aqua.
Aqua, okay. And can you elaborate on what the vision is for the use of this property? And I don't mean development, but what is the thinking or the intentions?
Our efforts up to now have been entirely focused on acquiring and preserving the property. You can be sure that there will be feasibility studies. We will be getting grants to determine what the best use of the property is. There's going to be a lot of work, so I don't think that we really have a fully formed answer to that question right now.
And how does that align with other open spaces that exist? I'm not conversant with all the open spaces you have, but they may have their own timeline of projects or...
Yeah, so one of the reasons that we decided to do the financing the way that we did was not to fully deplete the open space fund, to provide us the flexibility of potential other acquisitions of open space in the township, and still at no additional tax increase for our residents.
And does that include enhancements or improvements to open spaces that are currently under the umbrella, or are they already... under the umbrella, or are they already spoken for, planned, and are, are status quo?
The township only has two open space parcels, right? Three, there's the one behind us, and then there's the, the park on Valley, Valley Park. The third one, and then the Pickering Preserve. I, I don't anticipate that this impacts the maintenance of those other parcels.
Okay.
Unless, I mean, unless someone else has a differing thought.
The EAC has been maintaining those two parcels just fine, without any impact of this.
Okay. Is there public access to the Pickering Reserve? I know it's off topic, but...
Yes.
Yes.
Where?
It's right off Pot House Road.
Over by the YMCA.
Okay.
The driveway, the driveway is actually on State Road.
Yeah, that way.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I just wanted to, to kind of expand on what she just said, and I think it's a question that a lot of people have here. I just wanted to remind everyone that in 2009, when we purchased Valley Park, there were no plans for that. It was just green space that the township had. There wasn't a plan to actually make a park there and make it accessible to the public until 2012 or 2013. So, this is not unusual for the township to acquire a property and not have concrete plans for what we're going to do with that property. Valley Park, like I said, it was purchased in either 2008 or 2009. The plan was approved in 2012 or 2013, and finally, public access, and the pub, the park was opened in 2020. It took 11 years from the time it was purchased until the park was completed. I don't know what's going to happen with this property, none of us does, but it is something that is done, and we have done this in the past with Valley Park.
And this kind of approach also allows for the public input of what does the community want to see, rather than the five of us up here just making executive decision on your behalf. We, for, for large park projects, or large open space purchases, or anything we're doing, we try to wrap in the community input. We hear what you say, and then we can build something that everybody wants to, wants to use.
And that's exactly what we did with Valley Park, and that's why it took so long from the acquisition to the final, to, to the approval of the plan in 2012 or 2013. We wanted to make sure the public had knowledge and access and an opinion and say, and back and forth conversations with that.
Can I make a brief statement? I just wanted to, by the way, my name is John Lisowsky, L-I-S-O-W-S-K-I, 28 North Forge Manor Drive. I just wanted to say, well, in terms of my credentials, I guess you would say, I'm currently the co-chair of the Chester County Chapter of the Pennsylvania Master Naturalists, and I'm also a new board member at Green Valley's Watershed Association, and I just wanted to applaud your efforts in attempting to preserve open space, and especially in Schuylkill Township, which is my home. So, thank you for that.
Suzanne Rocky, R-O-C-K-E-Y, 160 Diamond Rock Road. I'm going to comment, so I might as well take the oath. Yes, I do. But I do have a question. So, in light of the comments that were made, is this going to be a preserve in perpetuity, or if something happens in the township, could you decide to sell this parcel of ground? How, how will this ground be handled?
So, in purchasing the property under the Open Space Act, we're, we're now constraining the future use of it for open space purposes. In, in order to undo that, the township would have to go to court and give a whole bunch of people notices, and there'd be other ramifications as well, and get court approval before doing so. So, this would, noting that there's no concrete plans, the one thing that's concrete in the township opening it, or purchasing it under the Open Space Act is, it will not be developed for 50 or 90 new homes.
Oh, it will, is...
Will not.
It will not.
Correct.
So, that's void, then, so another builder couldn't come in and offer and say, well, you already permitted that?
No, by the, by the township purchasing this through this act, it, it effectively precludes us from doing so. I mean, technically you could, you'd have to go to court to do so.
Okay. I want to thank everybody, I'm doing the happy dance, because...
You all are.
This is just what we dreamed would happen. What wasn't mentioned in, it is a very wonderful natural resource for us, but also you saved the community by not breaking through the cul-de-sac, and I'm sure they're doing the happy dance too, and relieved that that's not going to happen for them. And it's not in the plans, right? You're not going to make another access through the cul-de-sac that's, I mean, I know you don't have plans, and you can't comment to that. Anybody? No, okay. Thank you, thank you again.
All right, seeing none. Mike, anything else? Bob? You've got a free ride tonight, no one asked you any questions. All right, thank you all for coming. The board will have another meeting at 7:00 to discuss this and related matters relating to it, you're welcome to stay around, but this is the conclusion of the open space law public hearing, which is the required step in the process. So, we're happy to hear from everyone, and stay tuned, we're moving forward. Thank you.